It's 6:00 PM. Welcome to the February 26th, 24 regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District. Can I have a motion to amend the regular meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
First by Flora, second by Eunice. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I am also in favor. Passes five to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? For the purpose of discussing matters leading to the appointment of a particular corporation, the board will return at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Eunice. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Host. I'm also in favor. Passes five to zero.
Six.
Six to zero. Oh, sorry. Six to zero. I want to call the regular meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. Roll call, please. Ms. Richen?
Present.
Ms. Quinn? Ms. Heath?
Present.
Ms. Kersh?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Dabler?
Here.
Mr. Shatter? Oh, Shatter is excused. Sorry. And I'm here tonight. Is that everybody? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Matt, would you mind reviewing the fire exits?
Fire exits are in the back of the LGI.
We're going to start with our introduction of our valedictorian and salutatorian, Isabella Migliore and Wallace Way. Congratulations. And our principal, Corey Dwyer. We'll introduce them.
Good evening, everyone. It is my privilege to introduce to the board the Beacon High School Class of 2024 valedictorian and salutatorian. These are two outstanding students who have made an indelible impression on the many teachers, counselors, advisors, and administrators who have gotten to know them over the course of their time in our district. It is my pleasure to announce that Isabella Migliore is the Class of 2024 valedictorian and Wallace Way is the Class of 2024 salutatorian. Bella will graduate with a weighted GPA of 104.8. She has been a member of the varsity soccer, varsity winter track, and varsity spring track teams all four years of high school. She's also been a member of the mock trial team and has served as the student council treasurer since her sophomore year. Bella has committed to Wesleyan University, one of the top liberal arts colleges in the country, where she will run cross-country in track and major in biology. And her goal is to attend medical school and become a sports medicine physician. Wallace will graduate with a GPA of 104.5, so it was close. He has been a member of our mock trial and math club team throughout high school. And last year was selected to participate in the New York State Math League, which is a statewide competition in Ithaca. Wallace will be attending Cornell University. While he will major in computer science and will pursue a career in mathematics and/or programming. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Wallace's twin sister Emily is graduating third in the class, also with the GPA of over 104. And Emily is also attending Cornell in the fall. Bella and Wallace, and also Harsh, as you prepare for this exciting new chapter in your lives, know that you go forward with the support and admiration of the Beacon High School community. The hard work and dedication that you have shown over the years is precisely what students should aspire towards. We're very proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you and congratulations. We can't wait to hear your speeches.
Could we do a little picture?
Yeah, let's do it.
You guys mind? All right, come on down. Mr. Dwyer, can you join us?
I'll take it.
Someone else take it with her.
You already handed off the job.
Okay, public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that signed up for public comment? Karen Burka. Is there anyone else? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Karen Burka. My address is 1 Aspen Court in Pauling. And I appreciate that your board is allowing me to speak tonight. I wanted to introduce myself to all of you as a candidate for the Dutchess County BOCES Board of Trustees. There will be three open seats on the BOCES Board this year. Two terms will begin on July 1st and one term begins in April, right after the, excuse me, two terms begin in April after the BOCES election and one will begin on July 1st. I'm running because I believe that our students in Dutchess County deserve excellent career vocational training and educational programs. We've all seen a shift in education from preparing all students to go to a four-year college to acknowledging that that approach doesn't fit all of our students' needs. In Pauling, our superintendent, Kim Fontana, was a member of the Education Department's Blue Ribbon Commission. And one of that group's primary recommendations was to include more career training and work experience in our New York State graduation requirements. I've become much more aware and invested in how BOCES can improve upon its services. I want to ensure that Dutchess County BOCES provides our students with high-quality and relevant programs, that it can attract and retain great employees, and that it will do so within the budget needs of our school districts. In Pauling, more of our students are attending BOCES programs, both in Dutchess County and in Putnam, Northern Westchester, and our costs have gone up as a result. We've also seen our special education costs skyrocket, and BOCES can and should be an important partner in providing high-quality special education services to our students. I believe that being on the BOCES Board of Trustees is the best way to see that that happens. In terms of my qualifications, I've been on the school, I've been the school board president in Pauling for the past four years, and I've been on the board for six years. I've been a member of our school district's audit committee since I was elected to the board, as well as a member of our district's communications committee. I held a key role in developing community support for a successful $40 million capital project referendum to enhance Pauling's academic and athletic facilities. I am passionate about education and providing our students with a fulfilling school experience. I have a long history of service in my home district of Pauling. I was a Pauling PTA president, and I joined the school district's health and wellness committee more than a decade ago and helped develop programs and policies that have made student wellness a priority in our district. Through these experiences, I have learned the value of collaborative working relationships in our schools with parents, students, administrators, teachers, and staff. And if elected, I will bring these skills to my work with the other BOCES trustees and stakeholders. Professionally, I've been a freelance writer for about 20 years, and I write about the evolution of internet marketing software. Prior to setting out on my own, I had a long career in the publishing and media business. I have excellent communication skills that I think will help BOCES promote its programs to our communities and help keep us better informed. I have been nominated by the Pauling School Board, but would be honored by your nomination as well, and I'm also here to ask for your vote on April 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Meredith. I was wondering if I could just, with our families here, if we could just take a quick break to say congratulations to the parents. Corey, got some cookies?
Oh, absolutely.
And like just, I know we have a long meeting ahead of us, just like a two-minute break and allows them a chance so they don't have to listen to me talk about the capital project for an hour? So, and then we can get right back to it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Cookies.
I know. I saw the cookies. I will say, I was like, when are the cookies happening?
We wanted to just say congratulations. Super proud. You should be proud of yourself.
Oh, it's good.
Do it again this summer.
D and D, yes. 100%.
And I didn't want to act like that anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
But we can go for a long time.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. So we're do, so it's the, I can tell you right now which one we're doing. There's two sessions. And so we ended up going with the, session that is July 8th to 12th. So when you're looking, that's the one. And you should probably go ahead and register if you have.
Nice. It's really nice. The parents are invited.
Oh, that's great.
Meredith will be there. I'll be there. It's just really.
So you don't want to come much? I'll bring it over to you, bud. I'll feed you.
Bring it over to you. He grabs it.
How's the, how's the job hunt going? How long has it been? So we're going to continue the meeting with, we have two workshops tonight. They're actually related. The first one is our facilities budget update and the second is our capital project update. But before we get into either of those, Matt's going to talk about our, an issue at South Avenue and our emergency.
So it's, it's maybe a good introduction to talking about capital projects. So we, on the board agenda tonight is an emergency resolution that allows us to be able to start fixing the ceiling in the South Avenue gym for the last couple of weeks. Students have been either taking PE class outside or they've kind of re-allocated tables in the cafeteria and split it in half. And so indoor PE classes in the one half of the cafeteria. Huge thank you to Kelly Amendola, the principal, and the PE teachers there for being super flexible. Anyway, at first look, we thought it was going to be a quicker fix, but we're going to need to really look at the whole ceiling in, in the, in the gym at South. And so just wanted to mention this emergency resolution allows us to get fast-tracked approval from state ed on the design part. It also allows us to access funding pretty quickly as well. So we're obviously trying to get insurance to cover this as much as possible. I know they're coming back tomorrow to look at it, but we also have been discussing working it into this current capital project. The goal with this is that students are back in that gym as soon as possible. So we're not talking about next year. We really want this to be this school year. We think this is very doable. However, now there has to be some design work that happens too. And so this emergency resolution allows this next phase to start immediately. So again, we're really, our first goal is to have insurance cover it. And then secondly, to work the funding of this into the current capital project. And I have a team of people who know more about it here, if you have any questions either now or later. So the whole facilities team is here in Emery on the financing part. And I wanted to bring it to your attention because it's something that we added to the agenda today because we needed to work on some of the language part. We needed information today to get that part done. Are we going to have to wait for the insurance to say whether they're funding or not to start the work, or are we going to be able to do that immediately? Yeah?
What's the timeline? And I thought it was like three to five weeks and now it's...
It's difficult to put an exact timeline on it right now. And part of that is that it, we are going to wait for approval by state education department, but there is, the biggest unknown is CHIPO, which is the State Historical Preservation Department. The fact that the building is as old as it is, they have some jurisdiction over that to determine whether or not we have to maintain the details of the ceiling or whether they'll allow us to go forward with a more traditional or more contemporary ceiling, which, which has benefits to us from an operational standpoint. So, and, and we can't, we can't judge how long that will take. But by having the resolution, we can start working on that and get in touch with them, provide them the information to make that decision.
Worst-case scenario, if the insurance doesn't cover it, how are we funding it?
We have two options. We have money in an insurance reserve that we have sitting for things at the high school that we've used before, or we can incorporate it into the current capital project.
So we also, you know, the South Avenue community received an initial communication about this a couple of weeks ago when it first began. When we get a little bit more detail, we want to be sending out another communication to parents and families just so they are getting the latest. We've all been over to South Avenue a number of times just to kind of check on things. I was just there today. With the warmer weather, PE classes outside today all day and, you know, hopefully that can continue as many days as possible. But everyone's been really kind of working overtime on this just to get it moving, to try to get the funding covered, hopefully through insurance as much as possible. But it's, you know, like many of our other schools, it's an old building. And, you know, and also just a shout out to the building facility staff for noticing, you know, some cracks. We think the, it came from, we had that heavy, sorry, heavy snow and, and then heavy rain kind of right back-to-back and back in January. And we think that was the thing that kind of pushed it over the edge a little bit. So, but, you know, we're, we're trying our best to get that done. And like I said, it's a good segue into talking about capital projects. So we're really going to talk about it tonight because I'm going to speak about our current capital project, talk about a proposed capital project that we've been talking about in facilities committee for several months. And then Jesse Morell, our director of facilities, is going to be talking about his budget for next year too. So we have a lot of facility stuff to go through. So we want to review the current capital project. That was what we voted on back in the fall of 2021, $26 million project, which has the bulk of the work happening this summer. We want to just do a quick review of all the work that's happening this summer. And then we want to discuss a new proposed capital project for $49 million that will go to voters if you move forward with this in May of this year. All right. So this is, I'm just going to kind of review this fairly quickly, but we, we have a number of things happening in every single one of our buildings this summer. So it's going to be a very, very busy summer. At the high school, we have two science classes getting upgrades. We have some upgrades happening to the TV media classroom, some sidewalk modifications, and the track is being refurbished. I'm not going to read every single thing on here. Rambout is getting a lot of work. Two science lab full renovations, two art classroom full renovations, some HVAC slash unit ventilator upgrades, some corridor lighting and ceiling replacement, electric service upgrade. So Rambout is going to see significant work this summer. Sergeant will be getting a new library media center on the, kind of as you enter the building on that main floor. That's the main thing happening there. At Forestill, they're getting some unit ventilator upgrades. They're getting a parking lot redesign and some new playground equipment. And just about the sort of the process of capital projects and the time it takes. I was a parent at Forestill for the last six years prior to this year. And I remember in second grade, we were talking about this project and in the third, I remember telling my son, we're going to, you know, I think new playground equipment's going to happen at Forestill. And so now it's going to happen when he's in seventh grade at Rambout. And I say that not to discourage, but just that these things take time. And between the vote and the design work and all the bidding and whatnot, it takes a while, but it is really worth it because the new playground equipment at Forestill is just going to be great once it's there this summer. And then at South Avenue, they're getting a few playground upgrades. Their front loop and sidewalk are getting redone and reconstructed, and they're getting upgrades to lighting and ceilings and corridors and stairwells. I should mention, there were some things that the bidding process this winter, because of costs of construction just being still really high, many things came in higher than expected. And so the high school had a few things we had to scale back or not proceed with. There was a, a pretty significant upgrade to the fitness weight room that we are not moving forward with. The TV media studio, some of the more sort of design element parts, we scaled back on to save money. At South Avenue, we, we have both possibly putting like a turf field in the back and an outdoor classroom in the front. Both of the bids came in that, came in for that significantly higher than we had planned for, and so we're not going to move forward with those either. So we've had some, and we've had some lesser sort of parts of the project we had to pull back at the other schools too, to make it within that $26 million budget. At South Avenue, though, we decided to expand the amount of playground upgrading that we're doing. So they're getting two really cool new play structures in the back. And for the classroom, the outdoor classroom, instead of moving forward with that full design, which would have been almost close to $2 million with the bidding process that we just can't afford, we're going to buy outdoor furniture for that area in the front where the, I don't know, it's an oak tree, maybe, where the nice tree is next to the garden area. We're going to get benches and picnic tables so we can do outdoor learning and outdoor breaks and all that kind of stuff in that same space. At Glennam, we're going to be doing site work improvements, including additional parking and new drop-off loops. At Glennam, we're also doing a new secure entry vestibule, ceiling and lighting upgrades. And then the summer of 2025 at Glennam, some unit ventilators in many classrooms and casework in classrooms. So, so the bulk of construction for this capital project that we voted on in 2021 is happening this summer. We feel really good about who we have doing the work through the bid process. We've been really thorough with that. It's going to be a very busy summer. Our goal is to update frequently, either via social media or just email updates on progress of work. Later tonight, when I talk about the school calendar, we tried to push back and give, give our construction folks as much time as possible this summer to get this done. And I'll talk about that when I talk about the proposed calendar for next year. Any questions about this current one that we're in?
I mean, I just also want to point out that part of the reason it's extended as long as it has, because that wasn't the initial plan, was COVID, you know, and all of the complicated things that came with that. So I think going forward, that's, that's not our plan when we do a project, you know, we try to, we try to plan a project in, that can be done in a reasonable amount of time.
Right.
Yeah, the delays were related to supply chain, sudden fluctuations in cost. And then we intentionally pushed it so we could continue to do more with the money and not have to sacrifice things we had put in front of voters because of all of those conditions changing. So it was a time versus money thing, but that should not be an issue going forward, as Meredith said.
Right.
Can I ask quickly, like for this, like for South Avenue, they're not getting that, not that big $2 million structure is obviously cost prohibitive. What, is that, is there a discussion that goes on with the money that they do have to, like?
We've allocated some money for next year's budget for the principal to use on, like outdoor furniture for that area. She's also already, she's already told me that there's been talk about maybe the need of a new fence around the garden area. So I think that's something we can certainly do too. So we want to make that space work. It, the bid just came in way higher than we ever imagined it would. And it wasn't feasible for us to do it. I think the ultimate goal was to have kids outside in that area doing learning activities. And so we can certainly do that through, we have some different state bidding agencies we can get good outdoor furniture on. We can do some landscaping work around there to make it a nice, I mean, it's already a nice spot, but to make it a spot where classrooms can go. So we're going to kind of create a budget for Kelly for that, and then she can kind of work with folks at her school on what they want and work with us in terms of how we want to make that space work. The other thing we did is we pretty significantly upped the amount towards the playground at South. Originally, we were just going to have one play structure and we went with two fairly significant and large new play structures because we wanted, you know, we wanted the kids to come back next school year and be really wowed by what's back there. And I think, you know, Kelly and the PE staff there looked at different designs and made some recommendations, and it's really exciting what they have, a big giant spinny thing. I don't know the names of these things. And they have this cool climy thing that has slides coming off of it. And so we wanted that to really, you know, if we could do the other things, we wanted kids to really notice that part. So then with this process, we are, are working with our architecture firm, Tetra Tech. We're required by the state to do a building condition survey every five years. We have a facilities committee of the board that meets every month. And also our facilities is something that we talk about with our building principals on a very regular basis. And so one of the things we realized, this capital project that I've just been talking about, the 2021 capital project, and then there was one we did my first year here in the district, 2017. Both of those projects came in when debt was coming off and they involved no new tax increase to the district. We're talking about a larger project tonight. And the reason why we're talking about a larger project tonight is, to be honest, we're struggling to keep up with the needs of our older buildings, including the high school, which is our newest building. So some of the things that we're struggling to keep up with are keeping our buildings energy efficient. We're struggling to keep up with our roofs being maintained. You know, we're seeing things that just need to be upgraded and the, and the need to keep doing, or the ability to keep doing small projects to keep up with this is honestly becoming impossible for us to have functioning buildings. So we've really been working on this for the last year, both internally and with the board facilities committee, to come up with a comprehensive way to improve the infrastructure of our buildings, but also do some programmatic things as well. So we're excited to talk about some of this tonight. And I'm going to do the overview, and then I have much smarter people than me here to answer all the questions that we have probably during this. But I, I want to sort of put out there, we don't have to wait till the end. Just ask questions as we go. I think that's probably the best way to do it. So we're going to talk in general terms tonight about what we want to accomplish in this project. We're proposing a $49 million project. And so one of the first things we want to do is HVAC upgrades. So new boilers in some of our buildings, unit ventilators. We're getting to the point, people have seen unit ventilators in every capital project that we've done, at least my time here. We're getting right up close to the point where all of the older ones are, will be replaced with this new project. Of course, when we were talking about that just today, we joked that once we're done replacing all the old ones, the high school ones will need to be replaced, you know, in, in a few years or so. So the work never ends. Ventilation improvement in the pool area and upgrades to electrical and plumbing systems across the district. Again, you know, how, whatever words you want to use to describe it, infrastructure, nuts and bolts under the hood, but it's the important stuff for upgrade, or keeping our buildings maintained and upgraded as we go through the next few years. This is a list of things that we want to improve in the building envelope. We have roof replacements across the district, mason repairs, select exterior doors. And I, years ago, somewhere else I lived, I was able to get some new windows in an old house that we own in Charlottesville, Virginia. And new, new windows may not seem super exciting, but we are really excited about new windows across the district. And we'll get into energy efficiency a little bit later, but, you know, we probably have some windows in the district that are original. And so, you know, they'll just add a lot to our classrooms and also our energy efficiency. So regulatory compliance with older buildings, we always have a number of issues that we're trying to keep up with in terms of accessibility. And so we want to continue that work in this project. Asbestos abatement as it arises in compliance with DEC. Safety and security, this one is obviously very important at each of our buildings. We want to create a secure At each of our buildings, we want to create a secure visitor entrance. We already do everything possible with our existing structures to have a secure entrance, with people being buzzed in, with having security monitors at every main entrance to all of our school buildings. What we want to do, and we, you know, once we get approved and get into the design process, we want to look at what other schools have. But we want to look at being able to do the complete ID check outside of the buildings in each of our buildings. So, you know, that can all be squared away by security before anyone enters the building. We have outdated fire alarms and PA systems that we want to replace in most of our buildings, upgrade emergency lighting and replace interior and exterior doors. I talked already a little bit about this, but we've done some of this interior lighting work already in some of our buildings. We did some of it in, actually, most of our schools, we've done this in bits and pieces. We want to do this more extensively in terms of interior lighting and having this project really get us to the best we can with energy efficiency and performance. Roof insulation and new roofing. And then the upgrades I've already talked about to windows across all of our schools across the district. New HVAC in many of our schools with the new univentilators. The HVAC at the high school specifically is one we need to deal with. So we're really excited about being able to be a high energy performance district through this work. Programmatic updates. I've talked a little bit and, you know, we've talked about this in the facilities committee, having new lighting, having new ceiling, having new flooring, having new windows, having new doors, like adding more light to our classrooms, having our classrooms be modernized is a programmatic change. It improves the learning atmosphere for our students. But we also want to do some other significant things in the district. So we want to do pretty significant upgrades to our theater and stage area here at the high school, the Seager Theater. Our theater is heavily used by our student productions. It's also rented by community groups. And so it's used pretty much year round. It's a beautiful space. We want to keep it that way. So we want to really invest a pretty significant amount in that. Being a former elementary principal way back when, I want to keep things, you know, as equitable as possible between our elementary schools. So we have some new play structures coming to South Avenue and Forestal this summer. So in this project, we want to do some new play structures at Sargent and Glenham. Keeping those playgrounds fresh is really important to the four to 11 year olds and beyond in our community. We want to do some significant upgrades here at the high school to the tennis courts. So we're going to do a complete sort of redo of the, of the flooring? Is that what it is? No, it's not flooring, the surface. The surface, it needs a complete redo. And our baseball and softball fields, I want to talk about those for a second. In a rainy spring, which last year, I think we lucked out and we had like one of the more dry springs in recent memory. In a rainy spring, our baseball and softball teams rarely get to play a home game because of significant rainfall just kind of knocks those fields out for days on end. So we want to do a couple of things to the baseball and softball fields. We want to first work on the drainage, especially in the outfield area. And we're looking into just doing an infield turf for both the baseball and the softball field. So, so they don't have this like constant rain out process that's been happening, you know, in those rainy springs. We also have less access to Dutchess Stadium with the new team playing. They play an expanded season now. We used to be able to head over there and use it fairly often. Now our teams only get to use that space a couple of times a season. So we want to make upgrades to that. And then this is probably one of the more significant things in the whole project, save to the end. We want to add air conditioning slash, we're calling it cooling centers in every single one of our buildings that don't have them. So at our four elementary schools, we want to add air conditioning to the cafeteria and the gym, which are spaces that all students use at some point during the day. And that principals can also rotate students through, if it's a really hot day, they can rotate classrooms through, especially like the cafeteria during off times. We want to do the same at Roundabout. We want to also air condition their gym and their cafeteria as well. In those spaces, we also want to add significant air filtration too. So it will have sort of state of the art air filtration. There are spaces that have our largest number of students. And if we have meetings at night, our largest number of community members. And we want to have it both be a cool space during heat, but also like really good air filtration. So back to the first week of this school year, which seems like a really long time ago. You may remember we had pretty significant heat. And so I received just a lot of different inquiries that week about what are we, what steps are we taking to at least start to air condition our old buildings? I think this is a really significant step. And it at least means students at the elementary schools and at Roundabout will have parts of their day in air conditioning on a really hot day. It is not obviously fully air conditioning all of our buildings. That's something that we don't feel is doable or affordable right now. We do think it's a significant step for the district and we're really excited to talk about that. And then just some thoughts about the schedule. Ultimately, at the March 18th board meeting, it's not on the slide, the board will approve resolutions about what's on the ballot in May. And so we would be proposing that this be added to the ballot in May. So along with selecting board members and approving the budget and approving any transportation bonds, we also are proposing that this project get put out to voters in May. So the board would be approving that on March 18th. It's not on here. The work for this project would happen summers of '26, '27 and '28. We're just going to do a lot of different communications regarding this and interactions with the community. I say I, a lot of these will be a team approach, but I'll meet with each school PTO and try to publicize that widely in March and April to discuss the capital project. We also want to have several community wide meetings, both in person and virtual. The last time we did this, the virtual meetings were pretty successful. It was right after the COVID year, so people were really kind of used to Zoom. So we'll keep doing that, but we'll go also back to meeting community members at different spots. We know having the meetings just at the schools sometimes keeps some of our, you know, folks who, taxpayers who don't have kids in the district but still want their questions answered. So we'll do different community sites. We're working on that. We kind of want to wait for tonight's discussion and then we'll get that timeline rolled out. With spring break being early this year, I imagine a lot of these are going to be in April. But I'll start some of these meetings as soon as possible. But we'll probably do the library, we'll do some different community organizations. We sometimes have done a presentation at Beacon Rec. So we'll, we'll go wherever to talk about the project. And also we'll, we'll do one or two Zoom webinars as well. And then, Anne Marie, if you can come up and just talk about this. So it's a $49 million project, which is a significantly larger project for us. We really feel like all the things in there are either programmatically important or just important to keep our buildings usable. And so it does involve a tax increase. And so I want Anne Marie to just talk about that part.
So I use three scenarios for assessed value. If your home is assessed at $300,000, $400,000 and $500,000, just to give you an idea. So broken out, we did it in three different columns. If you happen to receive enhanced star in the second column, that would be your yearly increase. And then basically we broke it out by month. If you are a taxpayer that receives the star exemption, what that would look like for those three values of homes, again, the monthly increase for star. And the last two columns are the yearly increase without star. And that doesn't mean that isn't star, that you don't get star on your tax bill. So if you are a new homeowner in the area, you receive a check from New York State. So I kind of wanted to show that you might see this as an increase, but then you'd be receiving your rebate check from the state. And so those would be the increases. Again, these are based on current assessments. And as you know, and as we get into the budget process, more and more properties are coming on the tax roll. That is basically helping spread the levy. This would be, you know, another aspect of the levy. So these numbers might actually be less when we go, when we start the project itself. So these are just an example. Again, you know, we were lucky enough, the last two or three capital projects, not to raise the levy, but when we did the numbers here, we found them to be, for the amount of work that we're going to do, that it wasn't a huge impact to taxpayers to do all the work that we were proposing. So we wanted to kind of show the numbers. And we'll talk about that and how it compares to other communities as we go further.
I mean, that said, we know that any, any increases in impact on taxpayers in our community, we don't take this lightly at all. We've spent a lot of time, you know, really going over this and making sure this is the right proposal to bring forward to the entire board and then the entire community. Again, kind of back to where I started, this talk a few minutes ago, we really are racing to keep up with our aging buildings in terms of keeping them, you know, ready every single year. We really feel like this project, if it gets approved by the voters summer of '26, '27 and '28, really allows our buildings to kind of take a really, a large step or a large leap to being really functional. And we've really been thorough in going through the buildings with the Tetra Tech team and our, and our district team here in terms of really going over what needs to happen, what needs replacement, what needs fixing, what helps us really be a more modern district. And so we feel like this project really helps us take that step. So, you know, like I said, with the communication part, you know, we'll do a lot of meetings, most probably more in person than virtual, but we'll do both. We'll also create, and like in the information part of the website, a little bit later this month. But one of the things we'll do is we'll do an FAQ section where every question we get, either in a meeting or just through email, we'll obviously take the person's name off, but we'll make those questions a part of it so people can see like the questions that we're answering as we go. And, you know, it's, it's a change for us to do a project this big or to propose a project this big. We think it's worth it, you know, not only the infrastructure of the buildings, but I think those programmatic parts are going to be really huge for us. And, and I'm excited to talk about this with the rest of the community and, and take it to the voters in May. It's an exciting project and it really helps us modernize. But, you know, we have, so Jesse is here and Perry Sheldon, who's our capital project consultant is here. Like we have, if you, whatever questions you have, they don't have to be tonight, but we'd love to answer some tonight. And, you know, we'll be back throughout this process to answer whatever questions the board has as well.
Do you have any, does anybody have questions? Because I just wanted to comment from the facilities. So having, I'll just speak from layman's terms of being on the facilities committee for several years now. One of the things that you realize when you receive, part of planning a capital project is you receive a building and condition survey. And then you're constantly doing a balance between the things that really need to be repaired and the kind of fun things you want to do. And it is always, what's that phrase in economics, guns are butter? There's some things that we sort of have to do. But I think one of the things, you know, for some of us who have been more experienced with this now is we started to realize this is actually an interlocking thing. And instead of taking an à la carte approach where it's things age and come off and you have to deal with them. And then, and we wanted to think about it more systemically. And so in order to address the things that are aging and bringing in new items, it is much more effective to think of the building as a system and to address the building envelope. Because then, we always do, as Matt said, hear complaints about the, the temperature quality, the experience in the building. We had been doing lighting as a part of that, you know, in different buildings when we were doing other work. But it doesn't make sense to make any of these investments à la carte anymore. We need to think foundationally, the things that have to be fixed. If we're going to fix them and we're going to make the most effective, we have to fix everything around them. And then in order to, you could bring the best performance in for the PTO. You could bring, you know, you could have a great assembly. You could be doing something great. If you're hot, if the building's uncomfortable, if the windows aren't, you know, bringing in a lot of light, if you don't feel great in that space, all of it is less meaningful. So we really just decided to lean into this and to create a better lived experience in the building and to make any investments that we make in this capital program work better together. And I think that the cost, even though it does add some minimal tax cost, which we don't take lightly, is more effective, it's money more effectively spent because it will provide a foundation that we can build from going forward.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to add to that. I, I feel like having been, this is the third capital project that I'm part of as a board member. And I think I've learned a lot through these last two, just that you, and when it was, I mean, the first time I looked through a building condition survey, it's, it is one of the most overwhelming, kind of like heart hurting experiences because you realize like a lot of this stuff is, it just, it has to be done. It doesn't necessarily, it's not, it's not glamorous, you know, but it is really important. And we don't want to have any more situations like we have right now where we have instruction possibly interrupted because of a building not being maintained. That ceiling is 100 years old. There had been, you know, no maintenance to it because it had, it had lasted. But we have other situations like that. The roofs that we're talking about replacing are all 25 plus years old.
And there's no imminent danger, there's no.
There is no imminent danger at all. But it, but it, but I think that we have to start thinking about it in a, in a more, you know, kind of long term planning way than we have. So I'm, I'm very proud of the capital projects that we've done and that we've done very successfully. But this is a different approach. I really appreciate Jesse and Perry's input on this because I think it's been really important to really try to see this in a systematic way and to use the economies of scale that we have so that we're not just replacing, you know, the lighting in one hallway. We're hitting all of the hallways. And the, and the change of the, of the experience for the students and the staff there is really big. I mean, I think about the forestal entryway and it's like, it feels like you changed more than just the lighting there. It is a really big and important experience, experiential change.
Yeah, and we have those before and afters of hallways that the lighting was improved and windows were added. And it made a significant difference in how those halls, hallways feel and how kids move through them. And I do think if we're investing in creating these cooling centers, which we know will become increasingly important going forward, it does not make sense to do them without making sure that we are going to be approaching it in the most energy efficient way possible.
Just a quick note about community usage. Some of the things that help guide our decisions are also like the community usage of our different spaces. So, you know, in 2017, when we did the turf field, that's now used by Beacon Youth Football, Beacon Soccer Club, like a lot of our, you know, our community sports clubs use that space. We had this proposed track resurfacing, or not proposed, it's happening this summer, the track resurfacing. Part of what drove that was, you know, we have huge and successful track teams, but we also have a lot of community usage of, of our track. And so that drove some of that. I already mentioned our upgrades that we want to do to the theater. You know, it's a highly used thing. The improvements to the baseball and softball field. We feel like on a weekend day, those could also be used by Beacon Junior Baseball or Beacon Softball. I coached the league for three years. There was a large number of those games that are canceled because of rain that may have happened two days prior. So we really want the community to be able to use our spaces, obviously not on a school day, but like, you know, to use our spaces when appropriate. And I, we think this kind of enhances the community experience for kids and adults all, all the way through. So we're excited about that part. And Kristen, you got me thinking with the cooling centers, that we may have more building usage requests, you know, for using our cafeterias and our gyms in the summertime that, you know, that they'll be air conditioned. And so that's something for us to be evaluating too. But that's part of this is, you know, it's, we have community buildings. We obviously would never compromise safety, but like, when can the community use these spaces? And we've really worked hard to try to enable that as we've gone through all these different capital projects. So we're excited to keep being able to do that with this one.
Just to add on to Ms. Hearn, Ms. Flynn, of course, to Mr. Lando, thus like, although it may not seem like, you know, too like big of a thing, the small things in a classroom, like you said, the windows, the logistics behind it, like the AC, the lighting, it's all really important to the experience. And I really think that this will be impactful. And I really think that this will be impactful and it is an impactful thing on students because just that small experience of sitting in a classroom and it's like too hot or too cold. And I think that's like something that could really change, you know, like how a kid learns. So I think this is like truly important and I think it's great.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great to hear the student perspective on it. In our own bubble. I do have one question for you, Emery, in terms of the financials. Is this just for Beacon or did these, does this estimate go for Fish, Cone, and Wapentures as well?
It's an average of across the three. Obviously, you know, the city of Beacon has the biggest, you know, impact. But this is more of just an average and as we get closer, I can break it out by municipality.
Okay. Are there any other questions that anybody has as we?
So just like we'll say to the rest of the community, but questions that you feel like need to be answered moving forward, just let us know and we'll share those out in different ways. And also put them on a new link in the website that we'll have ready to go. This, these slides, we'll, Meredith, I'll talk to you just about the messaging with it, but we'll send them out to my email list tomorrow just so, you know, people know they can go back to the board meeting and watch. But, you know, we'll be publicizing like a community tour schedule probably within a couple of weeks. And, you know, like I said, we're really excited to get out there and talk about it.
And I appreciate you breaking it into these different subjects because I think it is an important way to think about it in terms of what is programmatic? What is, you know, where we're thinking about energy efficiency? What is compliance? I think it's really, you know, I know we'll see it in different ways, but I think this is kind of important to have these lists in this, in this way. Okay, should we hear from Jesse?
Good evening, everybody. So last year, I identified these four areas of focus for the department for last year. I'll go over briefly what progress we made and what we have in store for the upcoming year as well as the budget implications for the upcoming year. First, in the area of compliance, this year, within the 2025 calendar year, we have the lead and water testing. And that's a change from the past because the action level, the point at which the fixture would fail is only a third of what it was in the past. And instead of doing it every five years, we're now going to do it every three years. So, you know, in this, in five parts per billion, it's a very, very low level for this. So what we did in anticipation of that is with some federal stimulus money, we got 125 point of use filter fixtures. Some of them are things like this, like the bottle fill, others are just filters for existing faucets and things like that, and that would reduce the lead. And the good thing about this is we're doing it before we have the issue. Because if we had dozens of fixtures that were beyond the action level, we'd have to, you know, close those fixtures until we can either purchase these things. This way, we're ahead of it. The AHARA, districts are required to have what's called a management plan. It's basically just the history of asbestos or ACM in the building. Everything that's there, how it's going to be maintained, when it was removed, if it was removed, how it was removed, the date it was removed, things like that. So over the last year, we worked with an outside vendor to complete an AHARA management plan. We got current on our inspections. We took care of our staff training. And in last summer's project, we moved, removed some ACM from our buildings. Looking ahead, this summer, we'll be removing more ACM in our buildings. And we're, you know, hoping to do more in the future. And we'll continue working with our BOSI's Health and Safety to do some of our training, inspections, condition assessments, and that's all part of a service that we've already been paying for. So there's no additional cost to the city or to the district either. Fire safety, I'm sure you all know this is an annual requirement. Our buildings are all inspected once a year. Last year, we prioritized doing regular maintenance to our fire safety systems, doing inspections, educating our staff. And this past summer, we made some improvements to our building safety system. We have some more emergency lighting in some of our buildings. And, you know, according to our inspector that's been doing our district for several years, this past year was the first time, he never had to come back to do any re-inspections, which having done that myself, the norm is you always have to go back and check something. So looking ahead, we'll continue with the inspections, our continued maintenance. We're going to add more fire safety systems improvements and we hope to plan more for the future. During COVID, the district received a number of these portable air scrubbers or air purifiers for, you know, different areas. The issue that you run into with those is the replacement filter is about as much as a new device. We are doing a lot of univentil air upgrades, which improves the indoor air quality, but there's, there'll continue to be uses for these portable devices. So this past year, we were able to work with Duchess County Department of Health with a grant they received, they were able to send us over $35,000 worth of these replacement filters for these devices. So, you know, we have flu outbreaks, things like that, or areas in buildings where we don't have the best ventilation, these are still very useful and we'll have a long supply of replacement filters. Last year, I spoke about the importance of preventative maintenance programs. You know, it extends the life of the systems we invest in. This past year, we implemented what it's called ML Drawings Program. It's like an asset tracking program. So you put all your building assets in there and it generates preventative maintenance tasks that automatically go out. So the maintenance workers will have these preventative maintenance staff auto-generated. Going forward, we're, you know, investing a lot in new mechanicals. We hope to do more. It's important that we maintain these things right from the beginning. And that's going to require training our staff how to service and maintain all of these new pieces of equipment. So there's staff training and there's, and there's, you know, ultimately more preventative maintenance tasks. Staff development. Last year, we were focused on defining roles and responsibilities and adding training. We did a full day of training with our BOSI's Health and Safety and we did custodial maintenance workshop full day, which had a long, long list of different things that the staff was able to take advantage of. We had really good participation and, you know, I was real happy with that. Looking ahead, I'm going to focus on performance assessments and improve efficiency. One of the things I'm looking forward to implementing is an automated time and attendance system. It's going to save time and just improve accuracy. Right now, we do a lot of paper and it touches a lot of hands. It's just, it's a long process. And I'm looking at other assessment tools like checklists and things. I want to kind of see where more training is required. I want to see where we have enough resources, maybe too much resources or maybe not enough resources. So it may circle back to training, you know, it probably will. Recap on conservation. We retired one gas powered string trimmer and replaced it with an electric. The, you know, ground staff was embraced it, you know, and built it into their routines. We worked with MTE Equipment Solutions out of Connecticut. They brought us out an electric zero turn lawnmower and demoed it for us. Our grounds crew got to see it in action and, you know, it's an impressive piece of equipment. We're not due for a new zero turn and the price of these is about three times the price of the ones that we've been buying. But, you know, the technology is there, the price will come down. It's not on state contract because they only, you know, they only have a few. In a few years, I could see this being, you know, a real solution and they're pretty impressive machines. In the past, we had, you know, in a dark walking path, we would rent gas or diesel powered light towers to illuminate those areas for safety and things like that. We got rid of that and got wind and solar power lights. So we have this site lighting and no utilities involved. So we're, you know, every time we get a new piece of equipment or tool, we're going to look at zero emission options. There's a lot of stuff coming out, new technology every day. So we're going to continue that. We're, we've done some energy improvements last summer, we'll do more this summer and plan more for the future.
Jesse, are you finding that there's, because I know the solar and wind lighting was partially grant funded. Are you finding that there's grants available for things like the mower and that?
I haven't seen any for equipment like that, you know, but I keep my eyes open for it. You know, building stuff there is from time to time. I won't go over what we already talked about with capital project this summer. But last summer, we did do, you know, heat plant, site work, roofing work, hallway lighting, LED. And it makes such a, you know, a visual improvement when you're in those spaces. It really, it really changes. Again, so we have work going on in every one of our buildings. So in order to make that work, you know, our custodial staff is not going to have a normal summer. We have a small window of time where we have to prep all of these spaces so we don't interfere with the, with the construction work. We want to make sure that, that work goes unimpeded, you know, certainly not for anything that we fail to do. So we are already planning to get these places ready and we're planning to be able to get them, the rooms set back up, the spaces set back up in a small window of time. So we are planning that now with, you know, plenty of time to go. So this is what we're looking at for 24, 25. Our equipment stays about the same. We have salary increases, contractual and supplies, materials have all gone up slightly. The percentages of the overall budget remain relatively the same. Salaries, you know, taking a bit larger by out of the overall budget. And is there any questions, anything?
This presentation was fantastic. I really appreciate all the thought that you've put into especially, you know, how we are retiring equipment and like systematizing some of the things like the stat, what the, what is it? The automated time and attendance system and the, just everything that you've thought about, especially because this is such a high touch position, you're managing quite a few people. There's a lot of moving parts literally and figuratively. I think also having people using this new equipment or even demoing it, it kind of creates a lot of these, you know, folks probably also work side jobs elsewhere and when those companies are investing in equipment and retiring, having that direct experience can really impact them informing that decision. So I really appreciate you taking the time to do that kind of training and just all the thought you put in is, it's really great.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much. Any, hi Harsh.
Hi.
This is Sarah Lynn. Hey, how are you? Did you guys have any comments you want to share tonight?
So we kind of had like two things that we wanted to go over. Basically, I guess you could start.
So one thing that I've been kind of bringing up to teachers and I'm gonna, I brought it up to Mr. Dwyer and I'm going to bring it up to my guidance counselor, is that me and a handful of other people, like juniors and some sophomores, don't feel like we have enough room in our schedules to take all the classes or electives that we want to take. So I've kind of been thinking, what if we did over the summer, during the summer school, some form of teaching these electives that people can take more electives in the summer? One of my teachers brought up that for certain courses like psychology or sociology, they could probably be taught, like self-taught, if their students are given the material and then the students would do the work by themselves, the teachers would grade it and then they'd come in for a final exam at the end of the summer. And this would be for classes that typically get overbooked. So people who want to take them and aren't able to and therefore interferes with their schedule. So, yeah, we've just been kind of talking about possibilities of making something like that work.
So like a self-paced model, is that the?
Yeah, for some of them, but then there are some classes that typically get overbooked that I don't feel can be taught like that. So one of them is like Intro to Occupations is always overbooked and a lot of people who want to take it have to be denied until the next year. So if like the teacher for that is willing to, over the summer, teach the course during summer school, probably with double periods to match the week, the week requirements, that could be a possibility so more people are able to take it and if it's more with their schedule and what they feel is required for them to know to reach the education level they want.
Logistically speaking, I think we'd send out like a forms to students to see the general level of participation that would happen. Also, if we, I'm unsure on the policies, but if we can have it online as well, like there's many different alternatives. But I do think there is a general, you know, want, like for, like a kid during a school year, they want to take a certain class and they can't take it, they're denied that opportunity at the moment and maybe they won't take it next year. So it's kind of like, kind of like grants them the ability to, you know, pursue their passion in that way during that time. So over summer is definitely like an option that I think we should look at.
I've already talked to like a handful of students who said that they would be interested, but they want to talk to their guidance counselor first, see kind of how everything matches up. But I know that there is at least some interest in something like this.
So something like Intro to Occupations, what do you think the appeal of that course is? Like, is it the actual schoolwork or is it the information that's conveyed?
I'm not sure.
I think definitely for kids looking for like, you know, their parents tell them, oh, what do you want to do with your life?
Right.
Or, yeah, you should probably figure something out, you know, and it's like junior year, senior year or coming up on time and, yeah, sometimes parents tell their kids to do something. So they'll figure out through elective. So I think taking electives maybe in a self-paced way or maybe with an instructor at hand, I think it's really important for students, you know, if they want to, to help guide them into a certain way. And if they can't take those type of classes, then maybe over the summer, just to get that instructional information, I think it's less about the classwork and more about kind of just figuring it out that way.
Yeah, I was just wondering with that specific one, if there's a way to get exposure to the material without it having to be a course exactly, but then there's other courses that actually have, you know, a curriculum that you're teaching foundational information. So you need that instruction or at least the independent study structure. But if there's popular courses that have just topics that are really appealing, there might be other ways of getting exposure to that.
Right, so the thing with me is like, I wasn't really looking into Intro to Occupations. I just talked to my teacher and she's like, yeah, this one's always overbooked. I don't really know the syllabus for that description.
I've heard that too. I think my daughter got close down on it. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess the other big thing I kind of had to bring up was, so recently, I was talking to Mr. Dwyer about it, but Yale actually started to mandate SATs. So this is a new development now. And I think for future years, it's going to be a precedent that every other college starts mandating the SAT and eventually just comes back into the general high school curriculum. So I think looking forward for the future, I think there should be some sort of like, like student, teacher-led SAT class or just program after school. I know they used to do one after school, a couple, I'm not sure how long back, but it was led by, you know, the AP Calculus teacher for the math section and then the DC English teacher for the English section. So just something like that to, you know, bring in front of the students just so they can have an opportunity to have someone instruct them on this. Because I know in the future, it probably will come back as a major thing again, even though it's not right now. So I'm just looking for the future plans.
Yeah, well, I think it's a real equity issue because there's
For sure.
students, you know, that whose families can afford to pay for these training courses and it does really improve your scores on it. So if there's something we could offer here, I think that would be great.
Yeah, and especially with the new model now that there's less information available online specifically at this time. So in 2024, they started the digital SAT and the digital PSAT. Now, these are completely new. They're like rigorous still and there's not many resources because they just started. So if, honestly, it's tough to get it like started as soon as possible. But I know if looking for the future, there wouldn't, there won't be too many resources for at least five years. So I think looking to get something going would be very helpful.
I'm sure the college board will provide some sort of digital resource at a fee as they are very good at capitalizing on those programs. But it is also something that, yeah, I've been really hearing about that too, that there's, that it is actually, for a long time, it was considered sort of a negative thing. sort of a negative thing for achieving equity goals. But it's, the data is showing that it's actually a net positive for kids who, having a metric beyond, beyond just GPA, because there was some GPA grade inflation post COVID. And it is become, it is unearthing kids that will, they'll be able to shine through more for their abilities. So, yeah, we, I agree, we need to start thinking about it.
One of the things we look at with Mr. Dwyer, but we also looked at it with the Board Finance Committee, actually just a week ago was, uh, we looked at all the classes offered at the high school. We looked at, you know, the enrollment for each of the classes. And it's not that it's necessarily all going to change immediately, but we are really trying to pay attention to those classes that do get really booked up. And, and one of the conversations has been, how do we try to make that more accessible? Is it trying to find another person to teach more of those classes? Maybe it's something creative like you're proposing. But we're definitely looking at that data in terms of the electives especially that, that our high school students really seem to be gravitating to. And, and so, so we're, we're looking at the same stuff. And I'm not sure how much we can do in any, you know, given time period. But I, I think it's definitely on our minds like, and you know, Kristen was asking about the Intro to Occupations. That was one of the things we were actually noticing. Where a lot of those classes really had a lot of kids in it. And, and is it something that we need to figure out? Is it another teacher somewhere down the line? Is it maybe doing this innovative idea you have? So thank you for bringing that up. And we're trying to look at it too. And Harsh, I've seen, it seems like a lot of colleges are suddenly going beyond Yale to back to the SAT too. So thanks for bringing that up.
I, I wonder, would this be a good opportunity to do some sort of general survey with the high school students about classes? Cause I don't know if we necessarily have captured that data of students who've tried to take a class, but were not able to. So that might be.
I know like one example, it's like the criminal justice class. I think by top, top by Stouts and Hadland. It's just like every year I hear from guidance, like, yeah, it gets booked really fast. So, you know, you should sign up early. So the kids that sign up late get lucked out. So they gotta take it next year. So the thing with me was I wanted to take it in what 10th grade, I think, yeah. And it got booked. So then eleventh gave, 11th grade came around and there was a bunch of AP classes I had to take. So it's tough to fit in those electives with those mandatory APs that you're looking to get in because you need them for college. So it kind of becomes tough to take these classes.
And there's also a joy in waiting to some classes to your junior or senior to get into. You know, like a lot of courses when you're a freshman or sophomore, you can't get into it because upperclassmen are taking it. So there's still a joy in that, you know, like it's, it's, I hear their point, but then it's also a joy in knowing that I have to, by junior, senior year, I can take these courses. But then it does offset the kids that have to take the AP and the other courses as well. So it's, it's kind of hard to.
Yeah, I just think it would be interesting to hear from, you know, say a junior or senior that, that there's a class that they never did get to take because they, you know, they weren't able to because it was full and then their schedule couldn't, didn't allow for. I mean, we, you know, the nine period day is supposed to alleviate some of that. And I think it has, but obviously it's not perfect. So.
With certain electives, it's still. You know, because an elective might just be offered once, right? Even with the nine period day. So that's, you know, it's not necessarily, there's this easy fix that we're just missing. But, you know, your idea of like, if really motivates students to want to do it at different times, that's something that we certainly can think about.
That's another thing is that you said there's like a joy to waiting to when you're a senior to take it. There are certain classes that like, for example, I want to take, that I haven't been able to take yet. And I feel like it's important for me to take them before I start applying to colleges. Because I think it's important to, especially to have free education, to be well-rounded in everything. So you know what you're going to do instead of just taking requirements up until your, for the entirety of everything until you're a senior, that's already too late. You've already applied. Whereas if you take an elective and you're like, this is what I want to do, you know, it changes your perspective on things. So I think that people need an opportunity to be able to take something before college applications.
I think what Meredith's saying too is important because we have the data of like maximum subscription, but we don't have that overflow data of like, did you try to get in? Because then that, then that really tells us, you know, where we should be considering, you know, expanding programs. Because it's clearly like, the students are voting at their feet. But we, we only know things at maximum subscription. But if you knew like a whole nother section could potentially open up, then that would, that would be a whole different discussion. Am I, am I getting that right? Like, is that how you would schedule things? Like if you?
I think it's really student preference too. Like I heard, uh, you don't have to take AP courses. You want to take AP courses because you get college credit, right? So then you're not taking that elective part. So part of it is, is like prioritizing what you want based on the electives because there's not enough time in the day to take everything that you want, right? So now you have to make that decision, right? That choice as to what's more important to you as an individual, right? So I hear that, that piece as to, yeah, I want to do this and I'd like to do this. I'd want to explore this. So it could be better rounded to kind of make that decision. Some things you just have to go off and explore on your own, you know, because there's not enough time that day. And we tried to limit those, those pieces, but obviously there's going to be some opportunity, sometimes where there's a conflict and you have to make that tough choice.
Right, I, I completely agree with that. But I do think that if we are able to make it available, we should, especially because some people, you say like explore it on your own. Some people aren't financially able to do that, whether they're looking for a different program. You're a beacon, we have free education. And I think that that's really important to be able to take advantage of.
Yeah, no, I, I really appreciate you sharing that with us. And I think those are great suggestions. And also the SAT course, I think would be, you know, I'm not sure exactly how we could offer that. But I feel like I was thinking that before and then I was hoping that the SAT would just sort of disappear. But that does not sound.
That'd be too easy.
It is, I mean, the data is really showing that it is, I mean, I, I, believe me, as somebody who did not love that test, it is, there is, there are a lot of studies now showing that, you know, like kids who have these incredible resumes and have been able to have a lot of funding behind it. And then they have these inflated GPAs and everything that you, it's hard to balance out students that could really keep up with the rigor, but might not have had the opportunity to do all these other things or might have an after-school job or something. And, and so it, it's actually turning into a little bit more of a, it's a flawed equity tool, but it is an equity tool. There, there really is like showing that trajectory. And I, I have a friend who's a professor at University of Michigan and she always has a very hard time. I'm like, don't watch this. Don't trace her like, but when, when you get graduate student applications without the GRE, there is this question of like, okay, well, everybody's got a recommendation. There is a lot of grade inflation in the Ivies now. And then there's this sense of like, how do I know if this person can do the work? And, and just at a baseline. And sometimes having that data just at least lets you know, like, oh, they, if somebody shines through in another way, you might take them, but at least it gives you some like flashpoint of like, a snapshot that they, of what they might be capable of.
Yeah, I think for sure it becomes like, as you're saying, more of an equity issue because the SAT is more about if you know how to take that test rather than what you learned in high school. It's, it's really not like the level of algebra two you learn. It's the way that you learn algebra two for that test. It's all the strategies. And that's why the kids that take those prep classes, you know, that cost like thousands of dollars, Princeton prep or whatever, they obviously score better because they have those strategies. And it's not that your algebra two teacher didn't teach it to you. It's just that it's specific to the test.
I wonder if it could be a club.
Tried.
You did.
You did try. You, yeah.
Was it the least popular club ever?
Just like keeping up with teaching it is like, you know, I'm not a teacher myself, like.
You were running.
I think having a real teacher consolidates the classroom.
Right, a club with a, with a actual teacher. Yeah, I think that that, yeah, I mean, that's a lot for you to take on. Thank you for trying. But that's a lot for you to take on yourself. But I do, I think, you know, maybe that's a place where kids would have the time to give to it. And, and just sort of like a, because I do feel like it's one of those, it's like you, you can't really cram for that. It's something that needs sort of regular preparation for a period of time.
And I think with like a teacher, it's also more like, you know, like a respectful environment where kids can reach out for help. For the student, it's like trial and error, I learned that it's pretty tough.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, well, thank you guys so much for that. That's really valuable information and hopefully we can come back with some answers for you. Okay, um, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to be advised on labor negotiations? And the board will return in about 45 minutes. Alina, sir second. Eunice, second?
Yes.
Comments or questions?
All in favor? I'm also in favor of passes eight to zero.
Reviewing the agenda, there are. 1507, appoint probationary TA, effective date changed from 3/12/24 to 3/13/24. And added 18.01, emergency repair slash replacement of gymnasium ceiling system resolution, which we spoke about in the workshop. Superintendent's report.
I know I've done a lot of talking tonight. I just wanted to briefly talk about the proposed calendar. I think our goal is to put it on at the next board meeting for adoption for the 24, 25 school year. I just wanted to make note of a couple of things. One is we typically start the year with two superintendent's conference days before Labor Day for the last, I don't know, five, six, seven years. We only have one this year and I think there's a fair chance that that might be like a remote day for staff or a virtual day, just because we're trying to provide as much time as humanly possible for all the construction happening this summer across all six of our schools. So that's one difference. Another is we have a new holiday next year, a new holiday for the school calendar, Lunar New Year. So that's in January. We're still trying to maintain like a little bit of a president's weekend with the Friday and the Monday off. We're, we're going back to like a full day in March for superintendent's conference day and not the half days. And, and, you know, Memorial Day weekend, we have the Friday off as well. We're going all the way for the last day of students is the 26th, which is, you know, which is essentially where every district is headed. So, so anyway, it's, uh, this was going to be a challenging year for calendars just because there's, it's a little bit tighter than normal. We are coming back to school right after January 1st. There will be some districts that are managing two weeks off during winter break. A lot of districts are coming back on the second because it's such a tight year with the different holidays. And, and then for us, it's a little tighter because of the beginning of the year, you know, us starting a little bit, you know, like a day later. So all that being said, we're happy to get it all done. Then one other note, we are putting graduation as TBD, to be determined because we usually have to wait till about September to talk to the Renegades folks about the use of their stadium. And instead of putting like a placeholder day, and then it gets super confusing because we end up changing it, we're just going to put the word out that we will announce the date. It's usually in September, I think, is when we can nail it down with the Renegades folks. And so we're just going to try to put the word out about that. And that's, that's it. So next, at the next board meeting, happy to answer questions about it, whatever. But, uh, you know, we work, just the process, we tend to work collaboratively, especially with the BTA, the Teachers Association, and also our administrators and trying to pull it together. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Board comments, Semra?
Just, I'll be brief to say that thanks for the thoughtful work on the systemic, particularly systemic facilities approach. And I can speak as a South Avenue parent, thankful for the emergency repairs to that, to that roof and other front yard facilities projects. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Kristen?
Yeah, same, just a foot stomp on the hard work that went into putting together the capital project. And that's, and congratulations to the students who are named valedictorian and deputarian.
Thank you. Eunice?
Yes, thanks. Just a couple of updates on District Wellness Committee met on the eighth. Mr. Jimetta briefly gave, talked about what's happening with athletics, similar to his discussion here at the last meeting. Karen Pagano also was there and was talking to the group about some federal regulation regarding meal modifications for students with disabilities. That information, I believe I saw it up on the website already. So the community needs that, they can look online. And, and we were also, the group also met to discuss creating a like post-event survey for the Community Resource Fair that's happening in April. So that's something that's being worked on. Policy meeting held on the 22nd. We remute several policies which are on the agenda today for first reading. And that's pretty much what happened with, at those meetings. I wanted to say thank you for the donations and also congratulations to the stu, to students today. That's it, thank you.
And we had talked about moving the, we are taking over the 11th for policy. That was going to be a policy PRALE meeting. We're going to do facilities instead. And I had suggested the second, but Flora, you are not available on the second. Would the fourth work for our policy and PRALE people?
Wait, sorry, can you say, you suggested April 2nd, correct? Okay, yeah. And so yes, the fourth will not work. That's the DCSBA.
Oh, right, okay. So going to the next week, I have that we have a facilities audit on April 8th. But maybe we don't have that because we're having.
We moved that up to the.
The 11th. But that's a month later, I don't know, we might need that anyway.
I think that one was for the timing for the vote to have to be.
The 11th one is.
Yeah, yeah. And then I don't know what we'll have, we can put that, we can table that for now if it works better to catch up on any other committee work.
Well, would, I mean, would April 9th work for policy PRALE people?
I would be fine with policy on the 9th.
I could probably make that work.
Yeah, why don't we leave, and because we probably would want at least the audit committee meeting, I think. So why don't we do policy PRALE on the 9th?
Starting at 6:00 or?
That works great for me, if that works for.
At 6:00.
Which day?
The 9th. Is that okay for you, Matt?
Oh, was he first?
April 9th.
What's first?
PRALE sounds like 6:00.
What's better for people?
I have to go to both, so.
Yeah, I'm at both, so it doesn't matter.
I'm also in both, so it doesn't matter. We could do 7:00 for the, for the PRALE, we could do 7:00.
So 6 o'clock for policy.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
He's looking up.
You are easy to please. Okay, Alina?
Yes, I want to say congratulations to Mr. Shatter, Patrick Shatter, for winning Culture of the Year and his boys winning their first playoff game today. I also want to say I was helping and volunteering at the Wizards. Harlem Wizards last, was it last Friday? Last Friday, we sold out tickets. People actually came to the door asking for tickets. We had nothing to give. But it was a really good, it was a really good turnout. And so thanks to the Roundabout PTO, Beacon High School PTSO, Ms. V with National Honor Society and get all the students to help. But it was a great turnout and it was great, the community came out. I mean, just for being, the first time I'm doing it. I've been in Beacon now for six years, but just to see that, that was like, okay. Beacon showed up and it was nice and organized and security was there. And it was, it was wonderful, it was a good event.
Thank you. Anthony?
No comments.
Flora?
Yeah, I want to also give a shout out for the Wizards game. That was, um, that was so much fun. As my older son said, it was a real W. So I think that's a good thing. And they, it was just like such a fun night for my kids because it was so safe and it was so contained. So even though they're younger, they could sort of go and be with their friends and not, they didn't have to be near us. And I felt totally confident in them doing that. And that's such a nice feeling. And also my younger son who came home and said, Mom, the South Avenue Gym is cracked. I am also very grateful. Uh, I am also very grateful to, um, to, uh, the district for being able to, um, to take care of that in such a timely manner. My only other comment is, I wanna make sure that we are also having PRAL on March eleventh, if that still works for everyone.
We're not.
We're not.
We bumped it. Oh, wait, we could do it, I was thinking that was also a board meeting. We could do both that night. We have a facilities meeting that night.
Right. Right. I think it would be good for us to do, to have, to not wait until April to have our next meeting.
Okay.
I'm open to whatever time works best for everyone, if everyone's available to do that night.
Alina, you?
We have facilities at six PM.
Yeah, okay, so do we need, um, is, is an hour enough for facilities? Or is it?
And we have audit on the March seventh, right?
We do have audit on the March seventh, yeah. So.
Okay. We needed the eleventh, cause they need more time, that was the.
Right, so we could do, uh, Matt, do you think that facilities is just an hour?
Yeah.
Okay, so seven PM for PRAL?
Okay, yeah, that's great.
On March eleventh?
Yeah, so we've got March eleventh and then April ninth. And then we are still, the plan is to skip May and then we have one scheduled for June tenth, if we need it.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, great. My only comment is that, um, I saw Lines of Demarcation, the movie that, um, is high school students interviewing, um, older black Beacon residents through a, a project with Rise Up and, um, the Foundation for Beacon Schools. It was really, really great, I highly recommend, if anyone can see it. Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, tomorrow, twenty-seventh.
There's one tomorrow and then there's one on the twenty-ninth at the Howland. Although that one's full, I heard.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's just, it's very moving, it's very, very honest, it's really well done and I highly recommend. And it's, and it's forty-five minutes, so it's not a, a super long commitment. So everybody should see it if they can. Quickly, in new business, we have, um, an advocacy letter for the Loop Bus that Flora sent today, thanks Flora for putting that together.
Yeah, sorry, it was so late, guys.
So this is just asking for consideration, um, about the, the Loop Bus, that it's, it's, uh, it's, um, it's really an asset to the community, especially for our students and for, um, I mean, that's who we're advocating for, but also for elderly people that aren't driving or people that don't have cars. It, it really, you know, um, helps the sort of more marginalized populations. I don't know if anybody has any?
I just had, I just wanted to kind of rework the first paragraph to say, although it does not directly impact the district directly. Oh, sorry, let me say that again. Although it does not directly impact the district, we wanted to advocate for the students of the Beacon that utilize this. Like, I don't want it to be perceived that our kids are utilizing this.
Right, we've got our own transportation system.
So something to, to distort that. Yeah, we're not.
For students that do not have, um, outside of school transport, um, for, um, I don't know, like, it's definitely.
Something about a direct impact, like, even though it's not a direct impact to the district, we wanna advocate for the students, as we know, they utilize this resource throughout the community to get to extracurricular and/or.
Jobs.
Jobs, I mean.
For jobs.
So I, I was just trying to delineate, so they, people don't perceive it that it's, we're relying on it as a district.
Absolutely, yeah, that makes sense. Were there any other comments? Um, and I was thinking we would send this to, um, our city council and mayor, as well as Susarino. Is there any, and I guess we should copy Robert Olson on it and Jonathan Jacobson, although I think he's sending his own.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's happening, so yeah, we'll send it.
So, um, okay.
Yeah, so I will rework that second sentence there. And then, is, are there any other recommendations that anybody had?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you so much for putting that together.
It's really well-written, thank you. So all in favor of accepting this letter with the edit that Anthony suggested?
Aye.
So moved.
Aye. Oh, yeah, sorry. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. Consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all Board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any Board members would like to have pulled from?
Fourteen oh two, oh three, oh four. You could group them in, yeah.
Any others? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve fourteen oh one through eighteen oh five? Less fourteen point oh one, point oh two, and, I mean, fourteen point oh two, point oh three and a point oh four.
So moved.
Second. Uh, second by Alina. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, thanks for the donations. Passes eight to zero.